Good evening. It is 6:31 PM. Apologizing to be a little tardy. There's a lot of cars in the parking lot tonight for the record. At this time, we will call the meeting to order. Mr. Davis, do the roll call, please.
Mrs. Eichholz?
Here.
Mr. Marx?
President.
Mrs. Saye? Mr. Sumerall?
Here.
Mr. Tallis?
Here.
And if there is a motion to adopt the regular meeting agenda and addendum.
So moved.
Second.
Voice vote, aye.
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 And with that, we will take a recess until 7 o'clock. Good evening. We are back from our brief recess. At this time, I'd like to ask for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Turn it over to Mr. Davis for public commentary.
For public commentary this evening, we have one individual who signed up. Glenda Smith, if you'd like to come up to the podium there. Our policy does state that we have a five-minute limit per speaker, so if you'd state your name and your address, we'll start the clock on five minutes and we'll be happy to hear your public commentary.
Thank you. It's wonderful to be here again. My name is Glenda A. Smith. I'm at 30 Vermont Avenue, Wyoming, Ohio. So we're your arch nemesis in some areas, right? Again, my name is Glenda A. Smith. I am running for Hamilton County Juvenile Court Judge, and I'm running because Hamilton County Juvenile Court is 30 years behind the rest of the country and 12 years behind the rest of Ohio in juvenile justice reforms that reduce juvenile violence, reduce racial and ethnic disparity, and reduce racial profiling while keeping the community safe. I've seen the impact of these reforms, and I'd like to see them here in Hamilton County. One such reform is before the House Legislature now, House Bill 500, is to abolish mandatory bind over. Mandatory bind over is when a juvenile commits certain crimes and probable cause is found, they're automatically tried as adult. And we have statistics that show that a juvenile that is tried as an adult has a 38% higher chance of recommitting an offense than a juvenile who has committed a similar offense who is maintained in the juvenile system. There's 10 other states that have abolished mandatory bind over, and Kentucky is one of them. So if you want to learn or get more information, go to glendaforjudge.com or contact the Ohio State Legislature, House Bill 500. Thank you.
Thank you. And, Mr. Tallis, we have nobody else signed up for public commentary this evening.
Very good. Thank you. Turn it over to Mr. Konecki for correspondence, recognition, and announcements.
Thank you, Board members. Good evening. I'd like to share some late-breaking news first, and that is that today we found out that our school district for the eighth consecutive year received the Music Community Award. So we're very happy and want to take a moment to thank our teachers. Last evening, we had the first collaborative concert for the last two years, right here on stage with our orchestra and band and students from Madera Marymont joining the Braves. And it was just an amazing evening. If anybody got to see the concert, it was spectacular. And Trista Emmons, Don Barker, Chris Roching have just done amazing work helping put events like that together, and I think that's reflected in a community award like this. Obviously, Heather Kester as well, our choir and music teachers at every level, have just done amazing work. So we're really proud to receive that community honor again, and it takes everybody. It takes students, it takes parent volunteers, it takes staff members working really, really hard, and support by the Board of Education, of course, for amazing programming. So, late-breaking news that's out there on social media, and we're very happy to have that honor again. We'd like to take a few minutes tonight to talk about our state finalist, Ohio Center for Law-Related Education Mock Trial Teams, and want to celebrate all the students who competed at the different levels of mock trial throughout this season. Prior to the state finals, our Indian Hill students prevailed against six previous state championship schools consecutively. For the season, including district, regional, and state levels of competition, the students had a record of eight wins until the final state championship match. And we have several members of our mock trial championship runner-up group here this evening. If you would all please do me a favor and come down onto the front of the stage, we'd love to recognize you at this time. Why don't you do me a favor and come over to the podium, and you can take turns introducing yourselves? I think we've got a large enough group, but not too large, we can do that. Would love to hear and see who we have here this evening.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Goulurano Almatova. I'm a senior at Indian Hill High School.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Avery Valls. Along with Goulurano, we are the co-captains of Team Red.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ashvini Krishna, and I'm also, I'm a junior here at Indian Hill.
Hi, my name's William Dalton. I'm a junior, and I was a witness on Team Red.
Hi, my name is Lily Andrews, and I was a junior on Team Red.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Yalme Balaji, and I'm a junior at Indian Hill, and I was a witness.
Good evening. My name is Sarka Singh, and I was a junior on Team Red.
Hey, my name is Tacey Hutton. I'm a senior here at Indian Hill.
Hello, my name is Paige Boulter, and I'm a senior here at Indian Hill. I was a witness on this team.
Do me a favor, team, please, and come back over onto the front of the stage so we can recognize you one more time. Sure, just face out, please. I know we have a huge audience here tonight. But this is streaming, so... I also want to say while we have the students here on stage how incredibly proud we are of all they've accomplished. It's been a simply outstanding and unique season. And while they couldn't be here tonight, we also want to sincerely thank attorneys Mark Manley and Chuck Reynolds for the years and years of dedication they have put in in mentoring our mock trial students. They spend countless hours coaching and mentoring our mock trial students so that they can be ready for competitions at all levels, and I'm sure there are more great things to come when you see these students here in front of you. So, once again, thank you to our mock trial students. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you for being here this evening. Next, Board members, Indian Hill School Show and Tell took on a new meeting for our third-grade students. There were food truck operators who rolled into campus recently to serve up a lesson on financial literacy. There's some attachments in your agenda. If you didn't get to see it, it was a wonderful event. And really, literally, watching our third graders put together and run and manage a business project is quite spectacular. If you've never seen a group of eight-year-olds do so, it was pretty inspiring. We'd also like to celebrate and welcome, and I don't think we have any of the members here tonight, we have two new esports Ohio League teams competing for Indian Hill this year. Thanks to the support of the Indian Hill Foundation and some grants, we were able to launch the teams. Teams Rocket League and Team Valorant are now competing in the esports room through the support of our foundation, and both teams have winning records at this time. And if you follow a little bit on Instagram, you will see they have an account up, and they like to show their winning screens and scores whenever they do compete. So congratulations. Team Valorant is really doing some amazing things right now in this region as a new team. Also like to congratulate both teams from the middle school and the high school that will be advancing to the Science Olympiad State Competition on April 9th. That was happening last weekend virtually, and we had several students who have done some amazing work with that. We will share them here next month in person as we learn about their results. Congratulations to the 10 Indian Hill High School students who are in DECA's Emerging Leader recognition. Those Braves include Julianne Alsbaugh, Cece Benza, Sanibel Betts, Sammy Grenda, Nathan Heilbrun, Annie Isfording, Annie Joy, Matty Kahn, Maggie Shoney, and Elizabeth Whaley. These students have, again, gone through some pretty rigorous regional and state competitions recently, and that Emerging Leader Award is highly sought after by DECA students. The Indian Hill Latin Club earned 97 total awards, including 39 top-five finishes recently at the Ohio Junior Classical League Convention in Columbus. 20 students from our middle school and high school participated in the event, and they earned fifth place overall. Again, a Latin club, a highly rigorous competition that takes place in Columbus every year. Congratulations to those Braves. Both teams from the middle school and the high school advanced to the virtual Science Olympiad State Competition, as I mentioned before. Kim, I'm not going to read that again to you. Overall, regional tournament score was sixth place, that was the piece we were missing from before, and an overall regional tournament score, fifth place for our Olympic science competitors this spring. I think that's all for the general updates. Mr. Tallis?
Okay. Thank you, and congrats to everyone. Always exciting to hear the good news. And with that, we'll turn it back to you for the superintendent's report.
So first up, under 7A, we have a second reading this evening of some academic school fees. There's an attachment in your folder if you'd like to review those again. Item B, looking for the approval of some future overnight field trips. Letter C, some personnel actions, tuition reimbursements, and professional meetings under numbers 1 through 11 on the regular agenda, and you'll also see on the addendum several items through 12S. If there are no questions, I would ask that you entertain a motion to approve items 7A through 12S.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Eichholz?
Aye.
Mr. Sumerall?
Aye.
Mr. Marx?
Yes.
Mr. Tallis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Under my report this evening, I have to approve the minutes of the March 8, 2022 regular meeting, to approve the financial reports for the month ending March 31, 2022, several contracts for construction. The first two are for materials pre-purchase, SusiQ logistics for both the kitchen MAU and exhaust fans, and a domestic booster pump package. Item 3 and 4 are change orders for Skanska for GMP 3. Item 3 is an excess oil haul-off. We were unable to put all of the dirt that we needed to remove from the site in a location here on campus, so we need to move that off-campus. And then item 4 is to move the natural gas outside of the footprint of the building as it stands now. Item 5, 6, and 7 are new GMPs. GMP number 4 is for middle school structural steel, $6,500,412.48. GMP number 5 is for the elementary school structural steel, $1,083,538.31. And then item 7 is GMP number 6, that's for the primary school structural steel purchase, Under item D, you have a question?
Yeah, do you mind if I ask a question about this while we're there? So, item C, numbers 5, 6, 7, are those coming in more or less where you expected?
So, item 6 and 7 came in pretty much right on budget. We did, on item 5, have about $217,000 as an overage for a $6,500,000 package. It's a pretty small percentage. You know, we're going to look at, as the other GMPs come in, as offsetting that, and then as a final, the final option, we'll use our contingency if we need to on that.
Great. Thank you.
I've got a question on the change orders.
Yeah.
On the change orders 3 and 4, do we have a list that we can get sent to us with all the change orders to date to show where we are?
Yeah, we do. We currently have a PCO list with Skanska. I can get that, after we do our review each week, I can go ahead and put that in a PDF and send it to the board.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions on item C? Item D is to accept the donations of the IHS boosters to Robotics Club, $1,932.51, also from the boosters to our Vinyl Club, $1,000 even, and the Columbus Foundation for the ONE OSLN STEM Grant of $5,000. As always, we appreciate those donations from our various community and constituents out there. It's those welcome donations that help us run our special programs here in the district, so always thankful for that.
Just a quick note, Mr. Davis, on the OSLN STEM Grant, we want to congratulate Elizabeth Rebusch and Monica Dawkins and Andy Gruber and Aaron Owens for the amazing work they've done along with that faculty to work on their STEM work this year, and this grant is just, I believe, the tip of the iceberg for what will be going on at that primary school in the coming years.
Very exciting program. So with that, I will ask for a motion to accept items A and D of the Treasurers Report, items A through D, excuse me.
Moved to accept items A through D of the Treasurers Report.
Second.
Mrs. Eichholz?
Aye.
Mr. Sumerall?
Aye.
Mr. Marx?
Yes.
Mr. Tallis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next up, Mr. Tallis, item 9 is the second reading for our Neola policy updates. We went through this list last month, and if there are no questions, I would ask for a motion to approve 9A through H at this time.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Sumerall?
Aye.
Mrs. Eichholz?
Aye.
Mr. Marx?
Yes.
Mr. Tallis?
Yes.
That will move on to the project team for their presentation tonight. Thank you, Mr. Tallis. We've got some of the members of our project team here who are going to join us, and I think we're going to start off with Amy Benetti from MSA.
Hi. Again, I'm Amy Benetti with MSA Design. So this evening, Kirk, if you want to switch to the next slide, we're going to give a little bit of a preview. I want to, first off, thank you all for the information we've received to help kind of get us to this point, and we're giving you a snapshot of some of the work on kind of deeper diving into the music and wellness components at both the middle school and the high school.
Amy, excuse me for, let me just say, since we're having this streaming, to make sure that we clarify here, this is all for prospective or possible expanded scope for middle school and high school music and wellness. Thank you.
So if we can move on, so what we're going to talk about are three potential scenarios. So scenario A is the current project, and this aligns with the master plan that was accepted. So what you're seeing up here, I'm just going to kind of go by the large letters. So to orient yourselves, we're in the middle of this space here, we can kind of see the half-circle, that's where we are now, that's the auditorium. Off to the left is the new middle school, and to the right is the high school, the gymnasium. So just kind of giving you that point of reference. So here, again, this is the current scenario, and letters A and B are future expanded spaces. So the area indicated in A is a music space, which would be an orchestra. And then the area in B is an added band space, and both of these would cover both the middle school and the high school. So included within this current scope is the renovated music space indicated as C. And then directly to the right of that, in kind of the reddish color, so that D area is the rebuilt trainer and rehab space, and then E is the enhanced existing athletics that will be getting some systems upgrades and updates. So again, this is the kind of the current scenario, and then we're going to show two additional scenarios here. So moving ahead, so we're calling this scenario B, and this is additional new orchestra. So the difference you see here, where you see the letter indicated is A, that's red indicating that that's a new addition. So in that, that's expanded music space, which would be an orchestra space for both the middle school and the high school. And with that, then, the B in the gray box, that's a future additional band space, and so that could be added on at another time. So with this, then, it gives a little bit of opportunity over the area indicated with the letter C is the renovated existing music space, so that would be dedicated band for middle school and high school. Similar to the previous, the D is the rebuilt training rehab space, and again, similar, E is the enhanced existing athletic space. Moving on, then, to this final scenario, this is the additional music orchestra band spaces. So A and B would be new spaces, and since those are kind of added scope content, you're seeing here, there's the added cost over to the right of those. But expanded A, like the previous scenario, would be an orchestra, a dedicated middle school, high school orchestra space. The B volume would be the new band space, and these are in the right spaces because they really align with where we are now and the access to the existing auditorium stage. And then with these, kind of those spaces over here, then you go over to the right, and the area indicated by letter C in this scenario is a rebuilt wellness space. And D is the rebuilt trainer rehab, and then E, again, similar to the previous, is the enhanced existing athletic spaces. So you can see some of the cost implications of this scenario over to the right where those kind of explanations are. So with these, I'll turn this over to Pete and Mike to kind of go through some of the historical data that we've pulled, just to kind of helping paint the picture of some of these added scenarios and the cost scopes.
Can I ask one, just a quick question?
Yeah.
On the band in the orchestra room as it exists today?
Yes.
Do you have that approximate square footage? Because when I walk, when I've gone through those, it seems very, very tight.
It is compartmentalized. I think that existing space is...
This looks considerably bigger.
Correct, it is. I'd say it's more in the 4,000 square foot, 4,000 to 5,000 square feet, but what you can't see up here as easily, they're not wide-open spaces. There's some smaller support spaces within, and there's some load-bearing walls within.
And then built-in in the new spaces, is there dedicated storage space? I've heard that from a lot of families that one big challenge is kids hauling off large equipment and it being damaged, or?
Exactly. So with the current scenario, it just, it limits some of those opportunities for that dedicated storage that you're indicating that you could find in a newer addition.
Really, really important question, again, and we can share the specific square footage, but in this scenario where you see A and B built into a performing arts wing possibility, you're doubling the square footage available for orchestra and band by adding practice rooms, department meeting space, storage space, and a dedicated hallway with an elevator for moving equipment to the auditorium stage, which we just don't have on.
That was going to be my next question. How much of an improvement is this operationally from moving the equipment, the instruments, back and forth, and how much more accessible is that for the students?
If you've ever tried to move a tympani from one side of a building to another, this is a vast improvement, would make things much easier, especially with the access to the doors and elevators that would be built into this hall on this side of a prospective wing, and then overall for safety, security, and storage, upgraded facilities that we just don't have right now.
Yeah, it's in the right, the right area where we would put this, in that design.
How did we come up with the sizing square footage for A and B? And I know it's an improvement over what we have currently, but I'm trying to get an understanding of how we came to this conclusion.
How we came to that?
Yes.
Good question. So typically, how you look at it is you look at your typical number of students or occupants within the space, and there's some kind of benchmarking for these kind of functions. This is the square footage you need for that amount of students. So that's, it's historical data and just some of those benchmarking data points that we use to articulate what those spaces need to have. And then from the information we've gathered from all the constituent feedback sessions, we marry that with the support that we require, you know, that you guys kind of have specific support needs for those spaces, and then we build that in as well.
Thank you. I've got one other question on this rendering here. Can I get a little bit more understanding on C and E, exactly what's going to be going on in those spaces? I understand D, that's pretty self-explanatory.
Let me, let me see if I can help to start, Amy, and then please jump in.
Okay.
E already has some renovated space that we've created, Mr. Sumerall, for our wrestling team, and we would not do anything but continue to improve or enhance some of that space. There's also, when you look at letter C, the opportunity to reformat that whole space and move some storage back into where you see the training space in D and some hallways there on the east side of C. And then C would literally open up space for a weight room facility, as well as a cardio fitness room, locker room space for changing, restroom, and an entry vestibule on the west side of the building there, where you see C right at the top of the curve. So really adding square footage for training space that we don't currently use or have.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I think just to expand upon that, and letter E in the enhanced existing athletics, that's much more of the behind-the-scenes comfort, building systems, electric, fire protection, mechanical, potentially some windows. That's the sort of thing you're seeing in that space, just expanding upon what's already, you know, been enhanced over the last year. Any other questions on the scenarios before I turn it over to Mike and Pete?
Good evening. Pete Becker with Skanska USA Building. For those that haven't met me before, but I think everybody has, so, Kirk, if you could scroll down to, you know, at the last board meeting, we sort of talked about, when we presented in March, you know, what's the cost, you know, what to help make decisions on now versus later, as we're looking at procuring this possibly alongside with the current building, staggered to the end, and, you know, the schedule would, you know, we still got to design it and let it drift out a little bit and get vetted. So what does that impact? At the end of the day, the project team personnel, so what I mean by that is, obviously, our field operations that's ongoing with the building project, construction administration from a design from MSA's team, and any oversight from Mike and his team. You know, if the project extends out, we feel like we can get it done if there is, you know, allowing time for you to go through the process, make decisions, to where we would only need towards the end of 2023. So let's talk fall, up through the end of the fall season, around Christmas, Januarius timeline. So in theory, if we're finishing in August, we'd really only be adding on about four months to the project. A delay, go ahead.
Just a quick question you said, is that delay just this aspect of the project?
Just the, in relation to the 8.5 million between areas A, B, and then, you know, we're still going to renovate everything in the back of the high school.
But this, if we add this, that will not delay the construction of the middle school itself?
Correct, correct, yeah.
So it's just a four-month, a four-month delta?
Yeah.
From, by adding all this?
If you, if we work within the timelines that we're trying to shoot for with, with the board and the district and the team, you know, and then on top of that, subcontractor have costs that get associated with their operations that ongoing the job, and that's worth a certain amount of money. If all of a sudden now we decide to move this job out after we finish up the middle school and the high school project, you know, you're going to be losing the opportunity to overlap costs that are already incurred into this project that won't get added. So not to mention, we're going to be wanting to finish up the back areas of the middle school, you know, and then you've got site operations that got to go on. We wouldn't want to finish that work knowing that you're going to be doing a construction project maybe within four to five months after we got finished, because then you'd be paying for, we would be paying for rework, if that makes sense, whether it's landscaping and seeding. So anyway, you put all that into it, and then you add in inflation and the crazy... world of material escalation that we're dealing with right now. And these are just some stats that Mike and Holly pulled together, and Kyle pulled together out of resources. I would roll down, I mean, it's, in my mind, if I, if I look at this thing called the Construction Cost Index, an ENR, they're publishing about 8.9% right now through end of '22. We're thinking realistically, you could possibly see a range of 10 to 12 by the end of '22. We're hoping and anticipating, this thing has got to level off. You know, I was telling my wife today, I got a great deal on gasoline at 379, and, and it's amazing, like, two weeks ago, it was 409 or something. So it's got to level off. What we're anticipating is in 2023 and 2024, 3% per year, which is normal for what we would normally see in the construction world. So the high level of that is, what does it mean? If you need through the end of May or June kind of timeline to make decisions, we'll support you with all the information you need, whether it's cost exercises. I think what Mick and Kirk and Amy presented today was like, okay, here's the 8.5 million, here's a scenario where you do area A, and then what the impact of that is. So I think it really helps guide the information.
One question for you, I know, I think Bear Assis or Nancy or Craig, and maybe it might be slide seven, but was, what's the delta of waiting? So let's say we wait six months, 12 months, two years, five years, right? There's, there's obviously tremendous savings at some level, right? Because you've got earth movers here, you've got subs here, yada, yada. Do we have a ballpark idea of what that delta is?
Yes, I shared the deltas with the team. I was, put a lot of time in this, working with Holly the last couple days. So the 20, the end of 2022, let's say you, you took bids and you pushed it out, and you didn't even take numbers on it till the end of 2022, that's about a 9% increase. So on this is about $780,000. End of 2023, now that's 9%, it's not going to go away. At the end of 2023, we add another 3% on it. That's 12%, that, call that a million dollars. End of 2024, based on a normalized 3% per year market, 2024 would be 15%, and that's based off the current 8.5 million. And that's 1.27% increase over and above the 8.5.
So that's made up of, if I'm understanding you correctly, it's made up of two components, right? One component is just an inflationary piece. And then the second component is the loss of?
It's about a quarter million dollars just in project team personnel and construction manager, general conditions. And I can get into more detail and share it. And then with subcontractor general conditions and mobilizations on top of that.
That was going to be my question. Quantify the dollar amount of, if we do this in three years, forget the inflationary aspect, but what will those new general conditions, kind of mobilization setup costs be? Is that number?
That's in the numbers that I, that's carried in the numbers that I presented at 9% and then adding 3% each year on after that.
Okay.
Because is it as simple as saying, if we, let's just say hypothetically, we finish the project this year, and then in three years, we decide to do it, there's kind of fixed costs of bringing the crew back out, the general conditions, that's what I'm trying to quantify.
Yeah, that's in the 8.5 million number that was in there originally. So that's going to be the same, other than the four months dead ban that we're losing the efficiency to build with the middle school.
So, I mean, what, let me ask it a different way. What's the savings of not having to remobilize an entire construction crew?
I want to say half a million bucks.
Okay. That's what I'm getting at.
High level, yes.
So Pete, I think one of the things we talked about with Holly and Mike that we're going to want to see in the future board work session on the 21st is some specific slides associated with what you're saying with each of those scenarios?
Correct.
Along with some of those examples, which I think we're working towards?
Yep, that is correct. And I, I wanted to just step in. Mr. Marks had a, a question about, you know, what, what does this involve? I think, again, there's two pieces. It's efficiencies and it's, it's the typical, you know, escalation cost that go with it. So it's, it's both combined.
So to paraphrase what you guys are saying, because of escalating construction costs and the efficiencies of having the people here, if we can afford it financially, your recommendation is to try and, and do this currently versus waiting two years or four years?
I had a great conversation. I'm part of a, a group on a team around the country dealing with the market we're in right now. And, and the common theme I'm hearing, even though it's up, you're not going to see it go back down for the near future. From a, from an escalation point of view, reducing percentages.
Right, we're not, what you're saying then is, from a material standpoint, it may level off, but it's not like, hey, all of a sudden, we're going to go below par. Par where it is today is where it's going to be, and it's, it's just a question of, is it going up at 8% versus 3%?
Yes.
So there's not a benefit, in terms of a cost standpoint, if we wait four or five years, it's not all of a sudden, hey, the construction materials are X, and they're going to be 90% of X. No, the reality is, X isn't going anywhere, it's just going to continue to go up, it's just not at such a crazy rate.
One, one thing I will point out, in this industry, what we, what I've learned over the years, it's quite a few, I'm old, but what I've found is, when you look at market conditions and escalation, it's generally a straight line upward. And what we also will know, there'll be a plateau, but when you talk about de-escalation or a downward trend, it does not drop a straight line. It will come down and plateau, and a lot of it, I think, it's, it's, it's people understanding the situation they're in, and I think, quite frankly, I think they're going to try to take advantage of that market as long as they can. And typically, the only thing that, that will break or correct that market is, you know, as I say, it would be, you know, a recession. I, I lived through 2008 in the construction industry, and it, it was a game changer. But other than something like that, you're, you're going to see these prices where they are. Steel's a good example. There is a leveling out, but leveling out is expensive. The problem is, it's not going to get cheaper overnight. It's going to take quite some time for that, you know, steel cost to come back down.
So I know you said this earlier, but what is the drop dead date you have to have a decision by on this project?
I think we were, you know, if I look at where we moved, the, the big advantage is, as a group, we're moving forward with the design. So that's plowing forward. You know, and to me, if I looked at when the design team gets the documents finished, when we hit the bid market, the soon, the soonest we can, in my mind, we can still go through that whole scenario and pricing exercises and everything, and that gives you time to, to figure that stuff out. I would say, for area A, I would like, you know, my gut check would be towards the end of May, and I think that's some of the dates we've been throwing around with, like a tentative timeline.
Pete, am I correct in saying that we talked about the project team? We know that we have a late June board meeting, that at the latest, you would want, if you felt comfortable, we would need to have some feedback about A or B by that time?
I think we can do that, yeah.
I think we'd like to target that sooner, though, because there's a potential, I think if, I could be wrong, Mr. Kineck, you tell me, but in Ohio, are we allowed to cast votes remotely, or do we have to be in person? We have to be in person, correct? Because there's also opportunity that people could not be here in June, potentially with vacations and things like that, so.
Yeah, and we also, we also have the opportunity, if you feel after the 21st work session that we need to do something else with a meeting time, we can do that before.
Can I ask one more question on the project? Forgetting the cost ramifications, I think it's pretty easy to see, if you're going to do it financially, it makes sense to do it now. If for some reason, the decision is to wait, how disruptive would a project like this be to, and Kirk, this may be for you, for the operations of this school, to having all the new construction activity, obviously, you're going to lose direct access to it because we're going to have a school in place. How much more challenging, just from a construction perspective, from a programming perspective, operations perspective, is it if we were to wait?
Let me, I'll let Pete answer the construction management and operations side of it. From the perspective of operating a school year, what we've tried to do with the current project is mitigate and minimize disruptions, but we know, heading into the end of this summer and next year, that there are going to be some. If we were to close up the current project when it's done in the fall of '23, and then open up another one where you have to come back into the site and get onto the west side of campus, especially for a renovation on that side that could possibly be a wellness center, the timeline would have to be expanded because there would be even just traffic disruptions throughout the school year. And, and I think it would be a, it would be a lot different than what we're seeing right now, the way we're planning, because then I think we'd be in a different mode of wanting to be as efficient as possible during school year, and, and that's impossible sometimes with the daily operations on campus around a high school.
So I would assume that would have to distract from?
It would distract.
Your core job of teaching kids instead of running a construction site.
Yes, the safety benefit that we would have, that we don't have now, would be we'd have a connector done between high school and middle school for moving people during a school year, but in terms of logistics, just even around transportation and the construction site and safety, I would have concerns. Pete, do you want to speak to that?
Just on the, just on the raw construction side, I have to assume it's much more challenging to build this once the middle school is complete. Again, forgetting cost ramifications, just the actual construction.
Yeah, we would, we would hold off all the site, a majority of the site work on the backside of the middle school towards the woods, just because we don't want to tear it up if it's, you know, maybe put some patio and areas in right out the back that they can use, but all the other stuff, we would hold off. We'd have to bring everything out around the back, and then feed everything down through, around the back, because at the end of the day, the fronts all got to be open under operations. But, you know, in some time, you know, some of that work's going to, if you decide to go, still going to be going on, but to bring all that equipment and materials around back and not have the access to be able to do it while we're, all the heavy stuff, while we're finishing up the exist, you know, the current middle school, to me, would be a bigger challenge, but we deal with that all the time in our world.
One thing that would be helpful for the work session, too, would just be thinking about the parking package, you know, if, what that's going to look like, and be able to have numbers on how many parking spots we have now, what we have in the future, what the delta would be between this specific lot, for example, up here to the new lot, what it would be additional in the back. I think those would be good things for us to be able to look at, too. I know you guys probably, you're always on top of it, so you probably already got that stuff.
I know there's a lot of cars out there tonight.
Yeah.
That's a beautiful thing.
We can look at that for sure for the 21st, and board members, if you have any other follow-up questions about the financial pieces outside of the construction and operations piece that the project team can answer, we will also have our financial consultants here to present on the 21st.
Great.
Thank you, project team members.
Thank you all, as always.
Appreciate everything. Kirk, Mick, anything else? Anything else from anybody?
No.
That is our motion adjourned?
To move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. And for the record, we're never doing this again on opening day.
The board members voted for the calendar.
Exclusive coverage on the Indian Hill Television Network has been a copyrighted presentation of the Indian Hill High School Video Department.